Hello and welcome to the Central Unified School Board meeting for October 11th, 2022. I call the meeting to order. Attendance. Ms. Correa will be joining us in a few minutes. She's not here right now. All other board members are present. Adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a motion by Mr. Chan. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brooks. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Nays? The ayes have it. Comment from the community on the closed portion of the agenda? Ms. Brooks, do we have anyone holding? Do we have any phone calls holding?
We have no comments by phone at this time. Setting thirty seconds on the clock.
Thank you, sir.
Thirty seconds have passed and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you. I now adjourn the meeting into closed session.
Hmm?
Hmm?
Do you think so? I was like, huh, I sounded a lot louder than you quickly. Like, oh my god. Appreciate that. I just got a bad PR hit. So, somebody's mic gone up there. There has to be somebody up there. I'll return it up to those upstairs. But, she was like, yeah, of course, sort of a bunch of them. And those big portraits were planes where they have something alive on them. Sort of doing central life this year. I started putting a bunch of them in there.
...
All right, we're ready to start. All righty, I bring the meeting back into order. Ms. Davis, do you want to report out from closed session?
Sure. On item E1, there was a motion made by trustee Cervantes, second by trustee Brooks. Vote six zero, one absent. E2, motion was made by trustee Mailing, second by trustee Brooks. Also six zero, one absent, and trustee Correa arrived at 6:14 PM. And that's all to report.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item G, the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Chan. Item H1, school activities. President Perez, student body president. Item H1, school activities. President Perez, student body president.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys are having a wonderful evening so far. My name is Angelina Garcia. I'm the Associated Student Body President here at Central East High School. We have a lot of exciting events coming up in the month of October. Tomorrow, October 12th, United Soccer will be having their senior night at 2:30 PM at Collegian Stadium. Thursday, October 13th, is Girls Golf Senior Night. Friday, October 14th, during lunch on the pack, folk will be doing a performance along with a DJ to celebrate the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month. Next week, October 17th through the 21st, is Homecoming Week. Our theme is Grizz Bowl. We have exciting dress-up days planned for Homecoming Week along with lunchtime activities for our students and our Homecoming Court finalists. Monday, October 17th, is Music Genre Day. Tuesday, October 18th, is Twin Day/Teen Day. Wednesday, October 19th, is Sports Mom vs. Barbecue Dads. Thursday, October 20th, is Jersey Day. Friday, October 21st, is Spirit Day and Homecoming Rally where we will announce our underclassmen, Homecoming Court finalists, and winners. It's also our Homecoming Football Game at 6:30 at Collegian Stadium, Central versus Clovis West. We will be announcing Senior Hoco Court finalists and winners along with Homecoming Float winners. A Homecoming Dance for Students will be taking place after the football game. More info to come. Thursday, October 20th, is Girls Volleyball Senior Night at Central East in the gym at 6:30 PM. Red Ribbon Week is October 24th through the 28th. We have a lot of exciting lunchtime activities planned for students throughout the week. Wednesday, October 26th, is our first space-off of the year. Friday, October 28th, at Collegian Stadium, is Central's Football, Pep and Cheer Band and Color Guard Senior Night. Thank you all for listening to me this evening. I appreciate it. I hope you all have an amazing and blessed rest of your evening.
Thank you. Next, we will have the spokesperson from Central Online Homeschool.
Good evening, Central Unified Board Trustees, Mr. President Solis and Superintendent Ms. Davis. My name is Fernanda Quisada Andrade, and I am a senior at Central Online Homeschool. I would like to share with you a few highlights of COHS with you. Our over-cheering goal this year is providing students opportunities to engage with their school and have social interactions. We are accomplishing this goal by First Virtual Back-to-School Rally was very successful with over 200 participants logged into the Zoom meeting. First Leadership Club this year under the direction of Dr. Yos. In-person rally with games and prizes, leading holiday joy at our site this year, Hybrid Art Club. Students can either come pick up art supplies and do project at home while on Zoom or on campus and work in a classroom. We were also awarded a school club grant for our art club. Art competitions, district competition for stationery, school teacher design, drive-through trick-or-treat for our younger students. Elementary movie night will happen this Friday, October 14th, for our little owls to come together in a virtual setting. Weekly homeroom meetings designed for peer interactions and conversations. Topics include anti-bullying, goal-setting, using a growth mindset, and seven habits of highly affected teens. College application and financial aid workshops have also been happening, and we have six seniors who are graduating a semester early this year. Daily academic support Zooms for students who are struggling. Looking forward to secondary students are invited to get involved in the Community Service Day sponsored by the mayor and the city. It's November 5th, and the Leadership Club will lead the organization of this event. We will be offering a movie night at 5:00 PM on Monday, November 14th. It would be at the school outside. We help raise money for our ASB by selling hot cocoa and snacks. Plans for upcoming field trips for students to encourage student engagement, and lastly, graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Item H2, employee recognition.
Thank you, President Solis. It is my distinct honor to recognize and honor three very special people this evening. First of which is Mrs. Courtney Avery, currently the Central East High School Vice Principal. She was named the FCSSCTE ROP Teacher of the Year for the 2022 school year. Courtney, last year, served in the role at Central East High School as the ROP Sports Medicine Teacher and has had, did a wonderful job there building the program. She received the award last month, September 15th, at the Fall Conference and was a recipient among 22 other school districts to represent Central Unified as the ROP Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Avery. We applaud your accomplishments and thank you so much for all that you do for our students at Central Unified. Please join us. Thank you again. I also want to take this time to introduce to the school board two of our most newest principals here in Central Unified. Board of Trustees approved the appointment for Mrs. Anne Marziale to be the principal at River Bluff Elementary this school year. Please stand to be recognized. Thank you. Also, on that same note, Mr. Raul Diaz, principal appointment on September 27th of 2022, new principal at Roosevelt Elementary School. Congratulations, Mr. Diaz.
Moving on to H3, employee association highlights. Kuda, representing?
I think it's just me tonight. Good evening, Board Trustees. I don't have a lot to report out at our October 3rd SiteRep meeting. River Bluff SiteRep reported out that Socktober, they are having a donation drive to collect socks. You get it? Socktober. And Herndon Barstow, positives where they're having an art night and trunk-or-treat. Really happy that we're bringing trunk-or-treat back. And I'd like to report out that at our next meeting, Mrs. or rather, Dr. Tammy Boatwright will be attending our SiteRep meeting and sharing out all the wonderful things that we will be doing. And of course, Superintendent Davis is also invited. That's all I have. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Item B is being tabled. We're moving on to I, Superintendent/Board Communication. Ms. Davis?
Thank you. I've got a couple of things for you. Tomorrow night, I hope you've seen all of the flyering for it. Our Central 7th through 12th grade families are invited to a post-secondary information night. Our college and career counselors from all three campuses have worked together to do it and host it at one campus and bring in all sorts of representatives from colleges, ROTC programs, career technical schools, military. They'll be hosting different sessions as well for families to come. And if you want to swing by between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock at night, it will be at the Justin Garza Campus Mall. So we're excited about that event. Following that, on Thursday night, also, there will be an Autism Town Hall. The host will also be at Garza Campus. This is a partnership with FOX26. I know Gilbert and team have been working on it. It will be streamed live on channel CW59. People are invited to attend and ask questions of the panelists that will be there, burning questions they may have, or they can certainly watch it from home as well. That'll be in the lecture hall, and that starts at 6:00 o'clock at night. You may have seen on social media, USTFCCA. Please don't ask me to say what each acronym it stands for, but High School Track and Field Coaches of 2022 are our very own Coach Gary Davis and Coach Cedric Pulliam. They were selected as honorees of the state of California. They share the coaching responsibility for our track team. We're just recently awarded across the nation. They're a team that evaluates the performance throughout 2022 outdoor track and field season. So pretty incredible for both Coach Gary and Coach Cedric. Lastly, I would love to acknowledge the efforts of our Executive Director Serena Dohe, who hosted last week's State of the District event. We had a lot of vendors there, a lot of our community there. And I'd like to end my comments by sharing a video of our students who had a message for us at that night. And you know, we had a little couple bumps on sound, and I don't want to go without sharing their message. So I think Gilbert's going to cue it up, up here, or they are.
Academics, to me, is so important to students because I truly believe that it is your gateway into a better future for yourself.
Congratulations, you're going to the Scripps National Spelling Bee.
Academics are so important because they are the foundation of us. And learning is so important, and it never ends. Without that continual support to our education system, we get no more local doctors, local lawyers, local chemists, local teachers. You know, all those people who are in our community, that support our community, that make our community better. We don't get if we don't support our academics and support our schools.
Without this program, there wouldn't be no food, wouldn't be any farmers. Throughout my years, I've really liked the activities. I like being around the people, and it's really enjoyable for me. I really like being in it. People should really continue to support because it gives kids like me and more younger kids that keep joining an opportunity to really get that, those opportunities, those changes, and those responsibilities to forge them and make them into a better person.
Playing the instrument is just like the most amazing thing I've ever seen. The tuba is the most exciting instrument I've ever seen. You went to Carnegie Hall, you performed five pieces. A lot of people came to me after the performance and said that you played amazing, and our band was the best they've ever seen.
It's like a family, realistically. It's, we all kind of go together. We're all friends.
A shutout performance from Morales. She's bringing home a big old stop sign.
I placed at Fargo. I got first. I was a double champ, which was really one of my biggest accomplishments. And then I was, I placed at State. My freshman year, I got third, and then sophomore year was COVID, and then junior year, I got first. And now I'm hoping to get first again. It's played a huge role. It's really helped me so much and helped me grow and build my confidence as, you know, young girls.
Thank you for attending as well and for your support, and to our foundation for all the support given to athletics, academics, agriculture, and the arts. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Comments from the board? I would just like to say, as you saw in the video, we got some of the greatest students. I'm proud of all of them, and thank you, parents, for supporting your children. We appreciate it. Moving on to J, comments from the public. Ms. Brooks, do we have anyone holding in the audience?
Yes. We have Health and Wellness Fellowship, Jakarta Movement.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jasmine Carr. I am a Jakarta Health and Wellness Fellow who leads the CAD program in Fresno. This is our second year with the internship at Central East. Additionally, I am also a Central East graduate and work as a Certified Substance Abuse Counselor with Prodigy Healthcare. My job is to help educate and empower youth voices and create spaces of dialogue on the issue of drugs. Students have shown me how their peers are openly selling drugs instantly on Snapchat, Instagram, and other social media platforms. They have shared stories about seeing drug use on campus, whether that be vape pens, alcohol, or pills. They have let us know how they are not getting educated on the drugs, but told to say no to drugs and wear a costume during Red Ribbon Week. Our young people are accidentally dying because they are experimenting with substances they know little to nothing about. These pills are not all made the same. Some are laced with more or less fentanyl, a synthetic opioid that can be 50 times more potent than heroin. Hearing about fentanyl being laced in candy has been very heartbreaking. Hearing about hospitalizations and even deaths about fentanyl, while so many of us are silent and often, we don't have proper emergency measures on campus. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Castanon. I'm a senior here at Central East High School. Board, I urge you to listen to our youth. They are telling us what they need and the resources which we are seeking. Thank you for letting us share about this policy this past year. We hope the Board of Trustees will take us up on this policy that we are currently pushing for. Currently, Narcan is only available with the nurse, officer, and teachers and staff who choose to take the training which was provided to them over the course of the summer. We would love to see more teachers and staff trained. We would also love to see that 75% of the student body to be certified to use Narcan within the next year. By breaking the stigma, talking about the issues, and making Narcan more available, we may be able to prevent the loss of life of Central students. We hope the board considers such a policy. Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Amari Thomas. I'm a first-year intern and a senior here at Central East High School. As a student here, I am definitely worried about drug use on campus. It is no secret that drug use among students is prevalent. I myself have seen it. I've seen smoke clouds rise above me while I'm in the restroom, and I've seen students blow smoke under the tables during class. Students have to deal with the annoying consequences of this, like last year when the fire alarm would constantly go off, or like the locking of restrooms, or the searching of every student in the restroom when a smoke alarm goes off. With that said, I'm sure you can see that smoking on campus is a big deal. Unfortunately, it is prevalent that harder drugs are being used, such as opioids. Narcan is a medicine that's used to stop opioid overdose. After speaking with Mr. Admins, we learned that Narcan training was left up to the staff's own choice. After talking with staff around campus, we learned that Narcan-trained staff, or Narcan-trained staff member, was a rather rare find. We found this especially shocking when it came to liaison. Our liaison have access all around campus due to the access to golf carts. So if they were Narcan-trained, they would arrive anywhere on campus quickly and administer Narcan if needed. So why can't it be mandatory for liaison to be Narcan-trained? They can save lives. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Germosal Cor, and I'm a senior at Central East High School. This is my second year being in the Health and Wellness Internship under Jakarta. We have fire extinguishers on campus. Does that mean we are assuming that there will be a fire every day? We have Epi pens on campus. Does that mean we're assuming students will have an allergic reaction or that we want them to? No. We have these things in case a situation were ever to occur. These are our normalized precautions that we take to make our campuses safer. So why is there such hesitance to do the same with Narcan? Having Narcan does not imply that we are waiting for the day an overdose situation happens, but rather it is a precaution to make our campus the safest it can be. Though the Narcan policy is yet to be implemented, we are not stopping there. CAD is collaborating with multiple clubs on campus, such as Sick Honors in Society, National Alliance on Mental Illness, Friday Night Live, and Youth Leaders Institute. Our goal is to reach as many students as possible to educate what's really going on around them and to improve their safety. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ruthan Dollywell, and I'm a senior at Central East High School. This is my first year in the CAD internship. Fentanyl is a huge crisis in Fresno. So many of my peers have been experimenting with drugs. Little do they know, it could be laced with fentanyl, and it can end their lives. We want to be, we want to educate our school and community about drugs and alcohol.
Hello, fellow board members. My name is Ictip Carr, and I'm currently a senior at Central High East Campus. This is my second year as a CAD intern. This year, we're going to be spreading our knowledge about marijuana, fentanyl, alcohol, vape, along with other opioids. With this knowledge, we're planning to educate our fellow peers about all these different drugs. Upon talking to Principal Admins, we're going to be focusing on the marijuana epidemic and figuring out the solution to control drugs on our campus. We're hoping to make a change, especially with our campus, and we hope we can have your support to make our campus a better and safer place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks, do you have another speaker? Do we have any speakers holding online?
We have no comments by phone at this time. Would you like me to set 30 seconds?
Yes, sir.
Thirty seconds have passed, and we have no comments by phone at this time.
Thank you, sir. I'll now be closing comments from the public. Moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Paul, a second by Mr. Chan. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nays. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Moving on to our action items. First item on action is L1, approve revised board policies. Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you. Returning for your approval tonight are six board policies. These policies are all related to law updates. You have an attached summary of the changes for review. Administration is recommending the board approve these revised board policies, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or statements from the board? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Savantes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brooks. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nays. The ayes have it. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Moving on to our information items. First item on the agenda is M1, receive information on expanded learning programs 2022-2023. Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you. After-school programs are available for students and do provide enrichment opportunities outside of the school day. Some school programs do have a waitlist due to staffing. Students are identified for need and placed in the program or on the waitlist. We have parent-teacher conferences this month, and so we know that students are being added. Staff are being hired, and students are then moved from the waitlist into program openings as space does become available. Information on expanded learning and campus connection is available on our webpage under the Parents tab. This item is being presented tonight for information only.
Thank you. Any questions or statements from the board? Ms. Creo.
So I know the information's available on our website. Do our school sites distribute any, any like paper copies or send out anything along with like the student handbook or when there's enrollment of students to our campuses? Is that, so can you just share how else we are communicating, either at the district level or per school site, related to these after-school programs?
Right, so the program is definitely advertised, you know, at the start of the school year when we're offering our open registration. And then as need becomes available, if a student is identified as being in need, then that information is shared with parents. As I mentioned, we do have parent-teacher conferences that are going on this month. And so if a student is in need or if a parent requests extra support for their student, then they can be put into the program if there's space. And if not, then they will be added to the waitlist. And like I said, we are eliminating that waitlist as quickly as we can. You're welcome.
Any other questions or statements from the board? All right, this, this item is information only. Thank you very much. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M2, receive information for employee out-of-state travel. Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you. So the following request for out-of-state travel is attached. Our adaptive PE teachers would like to attend the SHAPE American National Convention in March. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the October 25th Board Agenda for Action.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or statements from the board? Seeing none, unless I hear otherwise, I'll go ahead and place this on consent. Thank you. Consent. Ms. Lopez, could you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M3, receive information regarding the 2022-2023 dates for elementary schools attending 6th grade camp. Mr. Garrett.
Good evening, President Solis, members of the board, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, I'm bringing to you for information, three contracts for 6th grade camp. One is for Houghton Kearney Elementary to attend Calvin Crest, and two, one for McKinley, and one for Riverbluff Elementary to attend Wonder Valley. 6th grade camp is an opportunity for students to experience learning and team building through a variety of activities, hands-on experiences that are connected to the state-adopted science standards. And again, I'd like to thank the board members for your continued support of those learning experiences such as these, and for your continued support through the approval of the LCAP, which helps us make it possible for elementary students to have this 6th grade experience. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the October 25th Agenda for Action, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or statements from the board? What's your pleasure, consent? All right, I'll go ahead and place it on consent. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M4, receive information regarding field trips. Mrs. Bergman.
Good evening, President Solis, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. Requests for overnight field trips and day trips over 150 miles must obtain board approval. Tonight, there are 11 field trip requests for your approval for the following schools: Central High School, Central East High School, El Capitan Middle School, and Madison Elementary. Documentation is attached. Administration is recommending approval and that these items be placed on the October 25th Agenda for Action. I am happy to answer any questions on these items.
Thank you. Questions or statements from the board? All right, I'll place this on consent unless I hear otherwise. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M5, receive information on October's Quarterly Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. Mr. Horstmann.
Good evening. This is our information item for the Quarterly Williams Procedure. All of our school districts are required to hold a quarterly public hearing to approve the complaint procedure. Principals and departments are compiling information as we speak for this quarterly report. Administration is recommending this item be placed on October 25th, 22 Agenda for Public Hearing and Approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or statements from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and place this on action. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M6, receive information regarding Variable Term Waiver Requests for the 2022-2023 school year. Mr. Collegian.
Yes, thank you, Board of Trustees. The California Commission of Teacher Credentialing has once again allowed school districts to utilize what's referred to as the Variable Term Waiver to essentially waive the basic skills requirement, also known as the C-Best, for substitute teachers to gain employment in times of shortages, like we're experiencing now. The requirements have not changed from last year. If you recall, we had this Variable Term Waiver in place as well. Essentially, each candidate must obtain a bachelor's degree to be eligible for the Variable Term Waiver. They also have to acknowledge and go through all of our mandated reporting requirement trainings. They have to show professional fitness, as evidenced by the Association of State Directors of Teacher Education Certification, also clear reviews by the CTC, and lastly, fingerprint clearance by the California Department of Justice and the FBI. Administration is asking for this item to be placed on the next Board Agenda, October 25th for action. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, sir. Questions or statements by the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and place this on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M7, receive information regarding school-connected organizations. Mr. McLean and Mrs. Belladeras.
Thank you. So tonight, I am bringing forward the list of school-connected organizations, which is an annual renewal process that we go through every year in accordance with board policy. We have 30 clubs renewing this year. A lot of great parents and volunteers helping to support our schools through these organizations. So the applications are attached, and we're recommending that these, all of these organizations be authorized to operate this year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or statements from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and place this on consent. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
Next item on the agenda is M8, receive information regarding Construction Management Services Contract for Justin Garza High School Visual and Performing Arts Center. Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So as the board knows, we've been discussing our projects that are coming up for Phase 2 of Garza, and we now have a construction management service contract that we're recommending for approval. It's an information item tonight. Again, we went through a pool of construction management firms several months ago, and at this time, for the Visual and Performing Arts Center, we're recommending the firm of Bush Construction Incorporated for this project. And the proposed contract is attached. It's been reviewed by our legal counsel, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or statements from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and place this on consent.
Can you place it on action, please?
You want it on action?
Please.
All right.
I didn't review it as much as I would like to, and I think I have some potential questions that I will prepare in advance.
All right, sir, you have an action. Thank you. Ms. Lopez, can you call the next item?
The last item under information is M9, receive information regarding Construction Management Services Contract for new elementary school at Shields and Brawley. Mr. McLean.
Thank you. So tonight, we also have a construction management service contract for the new elementary school at Shields and Brawley. We're excited to get this project started, and again, went through a process with looking at the firms that we're working with. And we are recommending a contract with Kitchell Incorporated for this project. And again, the agreement is attached, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or statements from the board? Seeing none, what is your preference, action or consent? Action. All right, I'll place the item on action. Advanced planning? Ms. Davis?
Yes, the calendar, the 12-month calendar is attached. I know we've been trying to identify a day for the follow-up work on the guiding principles and having a little trouble on when we can meet. Wanted to propose to you all an idea that came from my left, your right, and that was perhaps we could finish our next board meeting on October 25th, as is scheduled, and then add on a work session following that meeting in a setting that's a little more conducive to collaboration with our, our team, and finish that work. Last meeting ended about eight. Tonight, we're doing quite well on time. So perhaps we could do it all in the same night, therefore not impacting your other evenings. Curious if that might work for you all, and if so, then we'll prepare for that.
So does everyone have a thumbs up?
I'm seeing head nods, so we'll plan it that way. Thank you so much. Then we'll scratch off all the other dates that I've been sending your way, and we'll do it on the 25th.
Thank you. Additional comments? Any comments from the board? All right, I have a small one. I want to thank the board for taking time away from their families, and we had a workshop the last weekend. Everyone did a lot of hard work, long-term planning. Appreciate it. Our next meeting is scheduled to be October 25th. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Creo. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Brooks. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nays? The ayes have it. Good evening, everyone. Be safe.